Hey, thank you, Joey, and welcome, everybody. We're going to start out for this special work session of January the 4th, 2023. Happy New Year, Merry Christmas, and all those things, and welcome back. We're going to call the roll. Vice Mayor Barnhill.
Here.
Alderman Blanton.
Here.
Alderman Hansen.
Here.
Alderman Peterson.
Here.
Alderman Berger.
Present.
Alderman Brown.
Present.
Alderman Potts.
Present.
Alderman Baggett.
Present.
And the mayor's here also, so we have a full compliment of folks. The next item on the agenda is an opportunity for citizens to make comments for items that are not on the agenda. I do have some speaker cards, but they're on what we're going to talk about, so I'll work them in at a later time. And so unless there's somebody else wanting to make public comments, we'll continue to move forward because we're here tonight for this special work session to just talk about the City Hall project. And I'll ask Eric to kind of introduce what we're going to revisit and what we're doing about reprogramming and test fits and so on and so forth.
Sure. Well, thank you. Good evening and Happy New Year, everybody. Just say a few words of comment to start us off and kind of propose maybe how we break the discussion tonight into a couple key components. The first element I would suggest that we talk about is a review that we had planned to do with you about the building program as we have it. One of the discussion points when we talked about this a month or so ago was around really differentiating our understanding the needs versus wants dynamic in a project like this. And we feel we've really put a pretty significant emphasis on that needs component and moved from a master plan at around 115,000 square feet and brought that down about 24,000 square feet. And want to take some time tonight to go through that test fit component with an eye towards how do we serve now? What's in the plan related to growth? How does it relate to how we plan to serve the public? And so give you a sense of that to help you better gauge that component and that important element. And so that's what we're prepared to do, and we have members from our design team and our staff team here to help talk about that. The second part I know you'll want to talk about, you all received a letter since we last met about City Hall in December related to an opportunity or idea, concept of looking at another site near downtown. And so may want to talk a little bit about what that looks like or what your interest is in doing any kind of due diligence related to that or other property that might fit in that same category. So we have some initial thoughts, but if you give us some direction to work on that, we can as soon as when we meet next Tuesday, give you at least an outline of how we might pursue some of that work and maybe even talk about how we might be able to maybe move on a parallel path with a couple things and keep the project and the work going as we work on this important endeavor for the city, for the community at large. So if you're comfortable with that, that's how we'd like to approach it. And I'll turn it over to members of our design team who've worked really diligently on this throughout and have taken us back through how the test fits relate to both where we are now and what the future looks like in terms of serving the community. We have Matt Taylor with us and Anna Ruth Kimbrough with us, who've been great resources throughout this, and we'll turn it over to them. We have Vernon down at the end of the row there who's helped with our staff team, and we have some other members of our staff team here today as well to help answer questions along the way. But I'll turn it over to Matt and Anna Ruth, and we'll take it from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric, and thank each of you for coming back tonight to continue our conversation and discussion on City Hall. Happy New Year. Great to see everybody back, and we're glad to keep the project moving and the conversation going. We have assembled information in this presentation to respond to your questions and concerns about from previous meeting around the size of the proposed building. As you know, the results of the year-long reprogramming effort allowed us to reduce the square footage of the originally master-planned building by approximately 26% from 115,000 square feet to 91,250 square feet, as shown in the proposed test fit plans that we reviewed. Our team has worked very closely with the city team to identify what's critical in the building design, to facilitate efficiency in operations and service to citizens. Those critical needs are what's represented in the proposed test fit plans. We thought it'd be helpful to show you a spatial comparison between the existing City Hall and the proposed test fits, department by department, so you can see the improved efficiencies of the building, of the proposed building from the existing building. Following the graphic plan comparisons, we've compared the projected population growth of Franklin to the projected employee growth of City Hall. We've also provided some additional information in response to your questions about the size of the boardroom and the quantity of conference rooms within the proposed plan. We're going to go through the full presentation as quickly as possible, which is probably going to be about 25 or 30 minutes, so that we can leave ample time for questions and discussion. Throughout the departmental interview process, we heard repeatedly from staff across all departments that the current City Hall is extremely deficient in the following five things that you see in the bullet points on the screen. All the needs here are listed, all the needs listed here are basic needs that any City Hall should meet to function as a City Hall but are missing in the current facility. The absence of the basic needs listed below have led to negative results such as staff fatigue, unhealthy working conditions, inefficiencies in operations, lack of safety and security for staff, and a lack of sense of place or gathering for the citizens of Franklin. Therefore, these needs have been at the top of the mind in the development of the test fit plans so far. Functional healthy spaces is missing in the current City Hall and becoming increasingly less healthy as the almost windowless building continues to age. Healthy space reduces fatigue and increases productivity and the ability to attract and retain talent. To address the needs in the new City Hall, we're maintaining access to daylight and views from all workspaces, providing opportunities for collaboration and interaction among the staff, providing enough restrooms for staff separate from public facilities, providing outdoor spaces, providing a central break room, incorporating state-of-the-art technology, and providing modern, healthy building infrastructure, including HVAC systems for clean air. Regarding efficiency in operations and space use amongst departments, reusing an old mall building to function as the City Hall has resulted in compartmentalization of departments, which leads to reduced collaboration and reduction in space efficiencies. Many departments have their own storage, work, copy, and kitchenette facilities, which is an inefficient use of space, utilities, and other city resources. Most of these spaces are inadequate for today's standards. To address this need in the new City Hall, we're creating a centrally-located break room or cafeteria for all staff to use to encourage collaboration amongst all staff, allowing for informal gatherings and impromptu conversations. We're creating central workrooms for each floor instead of one for each department. This greatly reduces the redundancy of copiers, supplies, and inefficient storage, and it's another opportunity for staff from different departments to interact together. And we're creating outdoor spaces to promote further collaboration and health, providing options for places for staff to work throughout the day and promote health and productivity. Regarding safety and security of staff, during the interviews, we heard consistently from all departments that many staff don't feel safe in the current City Hall. Right now, visitors enter the building from five different locations, entrances with no clear delineation of employee zones. The walk from City Hall to the parking garage is not well-monitored or lit, making staff feel unsafe when walking to their cars after late-night meetings. It's important to maintain a welcoming City Hall for citizens while maintaining the necessary security for staff. Therefore, we're addressing the delicate balance between providing a welcoming City Hall with the safety of staff very intentionally and carefully. We plan to have one centralized lobby to welcome citizens with a person seated at a greeting station. Each floor will have a front counter to further assist with helping visitors find where they need to go. Staff will meet with citizens in one of the public conference rooms or waiting areas on each floor instead of allowing any citizen or visitor that could present a potential security threat to wander through staff zones and work areas, distracting them from their work and creating an unsafe work environment. Secure parking for staff is also provided in the project, allowing staff to safely get to their cars in a well-lit, secure parking garage beneath the building. A sense of place and gathering for citizens, a core purpose of City Hall is to provide a place for citizens to participate in local government, so that all voices can be heard and a sense of community is further emphasized. Therefore, many different types of spaces for gathering and meeting are important to facilitate this connection of citizens to their local government. Franklin's already an engaged, high-touch community that attends BOMA, Planning Commission, and a variety of government meetings to stay informed and engaged. And along with the iconic historic county courthouse, the local and local city and county seats of government have anchored the south side of the square for decades. Having this central hub to bring citizens of Franklin together within its historic downtown core will further enforce the strong sense of place and community that makes Franklin such a special place. Also focused on space for future needs and growth. Our criteria for evaluation and looking ahead to plan for a City Hall that is successful far into the future, not just a City Hall that meets the needs of today. We've programmed the building for current and future needs, looking 20 years ahead. Accommodating the future needs is important to ensure that the building lasts well into the future without the need for constant construction of additional square footage. There may be small cuts in the square footage that we can make, but this would equate to a trade-off with the flexibility for future growth. Small cuts to the square footage would not make a significant impact in the overall project cost, but could have more significant negative impacts on allowing for future growth within the current footprint of the building. I'm going to turn it over to Anna Ruth now so that she can share a graphical comparison between the existing City Hall building and the new proposed test fit floor plans to address some of the concerns that you all have shared with us.
Thanks. Good evening, everybody. We're going to start here with the existing floor plan layout of the current City Hall that we're in right now. And on the following slides, we're going to graphically compare the existing City Hall square footage, which is about 80,000 square feet, to what is proposed in the test fit plan, which is about 92,000 square feet. What you will find is that the new plan uses spaces very efficiently in comparison to the existing City Hall and responds intentionally to the basic needs of a City Hall that Matt just reviewed with you on the previous slide. You will see that the new department layouts not only accommodate current needs but also future growth alongside much-needed new spaces that are missing in this current building. All of this is accomplished in 15% more space than the existing building's square footage. So moving to this next slide, it's the existing floor plan again of City Hall, and we have shaded in the areas that are planned or departments and areas that are planned for the first floor of the new building. So that includes revenue, boardroom, court, IT, communications, facilities, the training room, and support spaces such as fitness and locker rooms. We have also divided the circulation into thirds to help compare the circulation of the existing building to the three floors of the test fit plans. Next, these spaces will be overlaid onto the corresponding departments of the first floor of the test fit plans for comparison. And then we'll do the same for each department's going to the second and third floors. So to help you understand how we set this up, the highlighted department here is revenue in the current building, so that's in yellow. So when we move to the first-floor test fit plan, first, I want to say that the shaded gray areas on each test fit plan are core areas of the building, stairs and elevators, which we don't have in this current building because we're not multi-level, and then restrooms, outdoor areas, and then on the upper floors, it'll be double-height spaces where we don't have floors. So starting, going back to revenue, upper-left-hand corner of the plan in dark purple, if we were to overlay that yellow footprint from the previous floor plan, which is the existing revenue department square footage on top of the new, that gives you a spatial comparison of the two. And what you see is there's not that big of a difference in what is currently in the existing City Hall in here. For example, the square footage of revenue in this building is 3,200 square feet, and the proposed is 3,600 square feet. So in a space similar in size to the existing revenue in this building, we have provided additional support spaces like small conference rooms, break areas that are missing in current City Hall, and figured in future growth for employee growth. So similar to revenue, we're going to move over to court, which is the lighter purple, just diagonally below revenue. Overlay the existing footprint. Again, you'll see that the court footprint in comparison of what's here today is very efficient, and we've also been able to incorporate storage for files, for tickets, and things that need the front desk clerks need to get to very easily. And that's something they don't have today, which leads to inefficiency in operations and service to citizens when they come to the building. So we're going to move to the training room, as you know, in the center of the plan, and overlay the existing training room footprint. Again, there's not a big difference, but with the new training room, we've allowed some flexibility, built-in flexibility, where we can divide the larger room into two smaller spaces or use it as one large training room. This built-in flexibility does not exist, as you know, in the current City Hall, so we cannot maximize the use of the room.
Can I ask you to?
Of course.
Do you have the square footage for the court in the training room, like you did the revenue?
I might have to send you a spreadsheet afterwards because I haven't written them all down, and this can't. [laughing].
Two-fold. [laughing]. I just thought you had it.
So moving, we're going to keep moving Plan Right to support spaces, which is where the fitness and the locker rooms for this current plan. We're going to overlay the existing again, as you can see, very similar in size. Now moving Plan Right to the turquoise area, which is facilities, if you can't read the label on the plan. The existing facilities department in this building are scattered throughout the building into separate spaces. So when we overlay the footprint of the existing facilities department that's dispersed throughout the building, you can see that the facilities layout here is much smaller. Just because we're able to consolidate them into one area, it's just really inefficient use of space in the current building. There's a similar situation for IT, which is in the dark blue. They are also divided across the building into many different areas of the building, leading to inefficiencies in their department functions and in collaboration amongst the department. So we've been able to consolidate them into one area, provide additional support spaces that are non-existent in this current City Hall, and a much more condensed footprint, and to allow their department to work more efficiently as one department. Communications is a similar situation. Again, they're divided into three different spaces throughout this City Hall. We've condensed them into one area and intentionally located them close to the boardroom and training room for efficiency in operations and setting up for meetings in these rooms for technology. It was mentioned in a previous meeting that the boardroom appears to be quite large, so we're going to give a spatial comparison of the existing and the new. This will help you see that it's not really that much bigger than this current room, but we have accommodated a lot more seats just by an efficient layout. Matt's going to go into that in more detail later on in the presentation, but we thought the graphic representation would be helpful. And as mentioned previously, we divided the circulation of this building into three parts just to give you, again, a graphical comparison between existing and new. So this is the circulation right outside the door, outside the boardroom with the vestibule out to Third Avenue, and the corridors up to admin, revenue, and then the central corridor. And as you can see, it's not much different in size than our lobbies, but we've been able to provide a primary and secondary lobby for waiting areas for citizens within similar space and make it usable. And this circulation, as you know, has divided up departments in this building and really contributed to inefficiencies in operations. So turning all of the footprints from the existing building on will give you a good visual on how the existing building footprints compare to the same spaces within the proposed test fits. We can fit departments in much more efficient footprints and add in additional support spaces that are missing in this current building. These include sufficient conference room spaces in a variety of sizes and configurations, separate staff and public restrooms, and consolidated storage and break areas between departments. This large area in white at the bottom of the screen here is a room that's missing in this City Hall and identified early on as a need in our programming efforts. It's the executive sessions room, but it's going to provide a place to hold other meetings such as advisory commissions, leadership team meetings, and large department meetings, as well as provide a place for staff, you, the aldermen, and commissioners together before and in-between meetings. So we're going to move back to the existing City Hall floor plan. The departments in gray here are the departments that will be located on the second floor of the new City Hall plan, and this makes up the development services zone, so it includes engineering, planning, fire, and BNS. And then again, we've taken another third of the circulation to help compare to the circulation on the second floor. This is the second-floor test fit. Again, the shaded areas in gray on this plan are showing you core areas of stairs, elevators, restrooms, and then double-height spaces such as the boardroom and the lobby that are open to below where there's no floor area. So departmental adjacencies were thoughtfully considered, of course, during programming, which impacts the building layout and size. So for example, BNS, planning, engineering, and fire work together frequently throughout the day, which is why it's important to have them located on the same floor adjacent to each other. So starting with BNS, which is the department in light blue, again, in the upper-left-hand corner, the yellow is the current BNS floor plan layout, and it is 7,900 square feet, where the proposed test fit has BNS and 5,400 square feet, so a pretty significant reduction. And the proposed plan accommodates workspaces for at least seven future staff that will be needed to serve the city's growth into the future, like other departments that have accommodated future growth. So planning in the dark blue here, again, there's planning's layout in the existing building. And engineering in green, dark green at the upper right, here's the footprint of the existing building. So as you can see, we are able to fit the current and future individual workspaces within a smaller footprint, as well as provide additional support spaces like conference rooms and the minimum number of code-required restrooms, which is something that this building does not have. Fire is similar. They're in a very comparable footprint to the existing fire department, but again, we have many more additional support spaces that they're missing in this current building. So here's the circulation again. So as you can see, the halls outside, they're not used in function for anything, but in very similar square footage, we're able to make waiting spaces that are much needed for citizens when they come here to conduct business, and many enclosed conference rooms that are needed for staff to meet with citizens. So turning on all of the existing footprints again on this will give you another good visual on how the existing building footprint compares to the same spaces within the proposed test fit plans. Through an efficient workspace layout, we can provide additional support spaces that are severely lacking in this City Hall, such as meeting spaces and restrooms. We have consolidated storage areas, workrooms, and breakrooms that are all in their separate segregated departments now into centralized areas to provide more efficient use of the space while decompartmentalizing departments and allowing for more collaboration. So the white area on this plan that remains is the space that Matt mentioned earlier, which is the large breakroom or central cafeteria, which was a space identified as a need very early on from staff in programming. This space will provide a place for staff to meet informally and provide an alternative place to work, in addition to providing breakroom, dining space away from employee desks. This space will promote collaboration throughout the workday amongst all staff, leading to increased familiarity, communication, and efficiencies in operations, something that this City Hall does not facilitate with the compartmentalization of departments and separate support spaces. So hang in there. We're almost to the third floor.[1481.51][1481.51][laughing]. Here's the existing plan again, and as on the previous slides, we've taken the third-floor departments and highlighted them in gray. So it's the administrative zone in the building, and it includes law, administration, human resources, finance and purchasing, and then the last portion of the circulation for comparison. So as illustrated on previous floors, we'll start in the upper-left-hand corner with human resources. Here's the existing building HR footprint as it compares to the proposed. And then moving to finance and purchasing, one thing we've done in the programming is we've combined the finance and purchasing departments for more efficient operations with those departments. And so the two departments that exist in City Hall, finance and purchasing, that's how large they are today. So moving to law and then to the mayor and city administration, you could see that the spaces are very comparable in size, but again, accommodate future employee growth and additional support spaces that are lacking here in City Hall. And then finally, the circulation. You can see how the circulation space in this plan doubles as usable space because we have waiting areas and conference areas, where again, in this building, it's just corridors that segregate the departments. So doing the same on this floor, turning all the existing footprint overlays back on gives you the visual of the comparison. And through an efficient workspace layout, we have again provided additional support spaces that are severely lacking in this City Hall, such as meeting spaces and restrooms. And we've consolidated all the areas that we mentioned before of storage, workrooms, breakrooms. So on this plan, the white area that remains, if you can see my cursor in the lower-left-hand corner, this wide area is another space that was identified in programming. It's a very flexible space that can provide a lot of functions in the building. The production studio with a view to the square, the square is over here, so they thought that would be a nice backdrop to host interviews. A drop touchdown area for aldermen for you when you come meet in the administrative zone, this could be used for that purpose, or an ideation space or flexible meeting space for staff to use whenever it's not in use for other things. And then we also have a functional outdoor workspace here, which is the other white area of this plan, which is something that this current City Hall does not have, but a very important area to promote health and productivity and collaboration amongst staff. So I'm going to turn it back over to Matt to quickly review a summary of the projections of population compared to City Hall, and just a little more information about boardrooms and the conference room quantity in the new plan, and then we'll wrap up to allow plenty of time for discussion and further questions.
Thank you. Now that we've looked at a spatial comparison, let's look at population growth projections in Franklin for the next 20 years as compared to growth projections in City Hall staff over the same time period. A population growth projection of 47% over 20 years is more than double the projected employee growth rate of 21%, which is an indicator of staff's ability and willingness to work efficiently with less people. This will not remain possible for long within the existing City Hall that's severely lacking in sufficient space, technology, tools, and adequate working conditions. The new City Hall building will allow for the conservative growth of staff in comparison to population by providing healthy space that promotes well-being, productivity, traction, and retention of talent, and the tools and spaces necessary to promote collaboration and efficiencies across departments. This is achieved by developing consistent space standards that allow for flexibility in use as the city staff population grows. In the previous meeting, there's a question as to whether the proposed boardroom has too much capacity. You saw the graphic comparison that Anna Ruth shared with you. This photo shows how crowded the current room gets on high-attendance nights. In this picture alone, the existing boardroom is about 50 seats short to accommodate this meeting with its current seat count of 96 seats. As you saw in the spatial comparison, the size of the existing and proposed is not vastly different, but the proposed plan can meet the needs of meetings such as these and have flexibility to expand if meetings get even bigger as Franklin continues to grow. The existing City Hall is extremely deficient in conference room space. City staff often struggle to find spaces to host in-person meetings, and many times the larger spaces are already booked when needed. The current City Hall has very few conference rooms with arrangements that are not conducive to many different types of meetings. In previous discussions, the number of conference rooms has been a question. The design team worked closely with city staff to look at the frequency and size of meetings and to establish the quantity needed. Conference rooms in the proposed plans are distributed throughout the building on each floor to provide convenience and flexibility for all floor to provide convenience and flexibility for all staff to access, rather than limiting them to isolated departments. More larger conference rooms are needed and accounted for while these bullet points point out the need for additional small-sized conference rooms shown on the plan. These smaller rooms also accommodate long-term employee growth because they can be converted to office spaces. So we hope the graphic comparison between the existing and new helps visually communicate that the proposed test fit plans are efficiently planned and allow for the necessary flexibility and growth into the future. We understand the concern with the costs and also know that construction costs will continue to escalate as they have over the past 15 years that the new City Hall has been under consideration. Meanwhile, the existing facility continues to become more deficient over time. There have been some comments about continuing to reduce the building square footage. Any further reductions would need to be within the limitations of the structural layout that coordinates with the parking modules in the basement. In other words, we'd need to look at a reduction by a full structural bay or in 30-foot modules so that, to work within the parking and drive aisle layout. You can see the parking garage in the lower-left corner of this slide here. This equates to reducing the building area in 4,400-square-foot chunks, blocks per floor, totaling approximately 13,200 square feet if the reduction is made to all floors. This would reduce the square footage to less than the current square footage of the existing building and would not allow the critical adjacencies to be maintained between departments and eliminate built-in future growth. Further substantial reduction in square footage would also require another reprogramming exercise like the one we just completed over the past year. Any further reduction in square footage will require the removal of spaces that have been identified by staff as needs for efficiency in the current operations and flexibility for the 20 years of growth. Staff has been very conservative in projections and needs a facility that allows them the flexibility to grow and the tools necessary to operate as efficiently as possible to provide the highest level of service to the citizens of Franklin. We're committed to finding further efficiencies within the plans as we proceed with the design of the building, and welcome your feedback to establish further priorities in the development of the design. Thank you for allowing us to share this additional information. We look forward to your thoughts and questions and feedback.
Very efficient presentation, yeah. How about it?
They must have done this before.
Maybe.
Maybe.
Yeah, to each other, yeah. So...
I do have a question.
Go ahead.
Well, I do have a comment.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
You know, I think you were asking, I think you said you'd get that back to us. I want to know a comparison of the square footage in the current department versus what's on the layout. So in other words, if, I think you picked, was it Revenue, at 3,200 square feet, and you're going to 36, I want to see what that is, and I want to see what the rest of them are. Because when you put 80,000 square feet up there, there's not 80,000 square feet that's being utilized. So what is being utilized out of the 80,000 square feet? And that's what you have to work from when you're building off of to go to the 91 or the 95 or the 115,000 square feet, whichever one it is. So let's look at that. I think that's pretty important that we do that, and there's probably other areas also. But right now, that in itself would help settle some of the concern about the 91,000 square feet versus the 95,000 and whatever else it is then. So let's do that. That probably should have been available for us tonight, and it probably is someplace.
We had that in the programming document information, so...
It's available, and I think another very useful piece of information is a list of what this building doesn't have that they must have in the new building, that is not, that's leading to inefficiencies in operations, because we can't overlook what's missing in this building and just compare. It's not an apples-to-apples comparison because the department sizes here are missing conference rooms, support spaces, have some support spaces that are duplicated.
Then that's fine. When you do that, you'll cover that. You'll say, Revenue has 3,200, they need 36. I'll buy into that. I didn't make any, if they need 36, they need 36. What I don't want to do is, I don't want to get confused between wants and needs. Needs I can support. Wants I'm going to take a look at.
We agree, and we've been able to plan for some of that, those needs, which we are including some future needs for growth, since you're making the investment in a building that's got to work for you, you know, beyond year one. But, and some of that, the centrally-located breakrooms and storage and work and copy areas are taking redundant square footage out of the building and making it useful, efficient square footage for the staff.
We'll get that down for Matt.
All right. Alderman Brown.
Couple of questions, I'm sure I'll have more, but two things. The retail component that we had talked about ad nauseam, I believe we agreed on Third Avenue was going to be part of the equation, is not reflected here or wasn't shown. So I'm curious how that configures, and I'm assuming first floor.
Yes, it is, and it would be beyond the first floor. Can you see my cursor?
Yes, ma'am.
Beyond...
So it's not even on there because it's, I see.
Because it's still in consideration. What we're doing is we're working with Bob Gibbs, you remember his presentation originally? We're working with city staff and Bob Gibbs on getting a footprint established, is that 4,500 square feet that we can build within the project that goes with his best recommendations and best practices, and we're going to come back in February to discuss that separately.
And so it's positioned along Third Avenue, that's right?
Correct.
And then secondly, at one time, we talked about how many parking spaces were in particular. Is the space shown here only going to be for internal use for City of Franklin employees?
Yes, throughout the day, there has been some discussion where it could be used after hours through valet service.
Like old Legislative Plaza, how they would do that?
Yes. But remember, this frees up the spaces that are being taken in the public parking garage and gets...
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah. If memory serves, it's a net addition of around 140 spaces, somewhere in that range. We need to factor all that in.
Will that take care of our employees, or will we spill out some?
That's after we take care of our employees. We're adding that 140 to the broader public use, and that doesn't even factor in the opportunity to use the parking below City Hall on off-hours. So yeah, that number's even larger.
And the net is, just remember, we are removing some surface parking through this building, so that's why the net's different, but we do have 204 spaces below, which will accommodate city staff.
Thank you.
But you've got, you've got 210 employees right now. If every one of them drove, you don't have enough parking spaces.
There's many inspectors that are out in the field all day that we've studied this throughout the day.
If they bring their car in, leave it and pick up a city vehicle.
We've talked about the city vehicles being parked at home and not being left at...
We've actually transitioned to those being vehicles those folks use every day.
So you need to get those out of the parking lot that's on the Second Avenue, because I suspect there's 50, was, I hadn't been up there to look because I don't have to go up to the top to find a place to park. But at one time, there's probably 50, 60 of city vehicles besides the vehicles for each employee that's here working also.
And some of that's already happened. We've actually assigned about 15, 16 vehicles directly to inspectors. They make, that makes them more efficient to go right to inspection sites, and they don't take up parking spaces in this garage. So we've actually already done some of that to reduce the city demand as we have it today. So that continues on.
Alderman Berger, I had you next.
So actually, sometimes I consider that wants can actually translate into being needs in the future, sort of, not all wants, of course, but you know, some wants, we have to say, is that actually looking forward to the future for future needs? So we have to consider whatever those would be. Other thing is, thank you for having the third floor have an outside outdoor space. I think that's really important for people in working environments. Then, small cuts to square footage, I would not be in favor of because I don't think that's wise for future expansion and growth. I think we, cutting small portions of square footage, I just think that's insufficient to do. The other thing is, do we have public restrooms on each of the floors? We do? Okay.
Yes.
I figured we did, but I just want to make sure. And then the other thing is, my question is, which departments have the highest public footprint, highest public traffic?
Like the highest public interaction? No, it's all the departments on the first floor, and that's why they're on the first floor. So it's Revenue and Court, because they have the longest queuing of customers. And then Development Services is actually occupies the largest floor plate in the building, but like we said, they need to be on the same floor together to work efficiently. Where here, they're decompartmentalized and they can't communicate efficiently. So they do have high customer traffic, but we've provided, you know, the monumental stair and a way to get up there and waiting areas to bring people up to those floors. Because it's just, it's too large of a floor plate to fit the public-facing boardroom and all of that, and all of Development Services almost.
Because I was thinking, when I'm in City Hall, most of the time when I see people, of course, the courts one thing, but they're not in session every day.
Right.
They're, how often are they in session? Once?
Twice a month.
Twice a month, twice a month.
You do have transactions that happen outside the court.
Oh, sure, yeah. I mean, I know that, yeah. So to me, every time I'm in City Hall, every time I'm here, it's like BNA is a revolving door. So they're actually on the second floor. Well, with the staircase, that's good, because people can zip up, zip back down, or if they want to take the elevator, they can take the elevator. The convenience factor is really important when you have such a busy department.
It is.
But I'm like looking at it going, how possible, how possibly could they do that? And I don't think it is.
Yeah, it's because we evaluated the priorities on what's on first. We even looked at the boardroom going up to the second floor, so we could get Development Services. But just through talking through that with staff, it just made more sense to have the main meeting spaces where big populations of people come at one time, and have the, where people come to pay their bills that might need to get in easier, that might have some disabilities that need to get to the clerks easier. It was a hard thing, but it's a site constraint, really. We can't just put it all on the first floor.
No, I definitely think that's the important part of that, because when you have public meetings, you really have to be accessible, to be accessible to wheelchairs, you have to be accessible to older and younger people coming in, whatever it is, and then the other part of that is, what you mentioned. I have a couple of other things, but I'll hold off. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Alderman Baggett.
Thank you. That was very helpful, and I think the overlays, for us that are in various professions other than architecture, I think found helpful. Well, at least I can speak for myself. The 40, so the 30-foot module comment, so if we were to reduce the size, you're saying that is, has to be done in 30-foot increments because of the way the structure is in the deck?
On a high level right now, that's the way we need to look, because there are very specific dimensions for parking spaces and drive aisles required, and so we can't put columns in the middle unless we give up parking spaces and make a very inefficient garage.
And if we reduce by less than a column, we're getting into very costly structural gymnastics of transfer beams and those sorts of things, because we're not carrying the structure all the way through the building. So really, it could end up being more costly than the reduction in square footage, and then you've backtracked, and you've also sacrificed future growth in those things that are really important for a lifetime building.
So on that last slide, if you see the parking garage plan on the lower left, and you see the circles with the lines running through the building, those are those 30-foot modules. So that gives you a visual of the slice of the building we're talking about.
Which is why, so 4,400-square-foot chunks, which is that wide there?
That's 30 feet by the width of the building.
That's why the retail component possibly might be 4,500 square foot, or is that just coincidence?
It's independent.
It's based on the financial model of what can be, yeah.
That doesn't, and also we've heard that this other, so the, I don't know what direction that is, but the far right of the parking deck, that is still going to be built, the parking garage, so that a building theoretically one day could be built on top of it.
And please don't misunderstand, we're going to, because we're in early schematic design, you know, finishing this reprogramming, we're going to continue to look for the efficiencies in ways that, there may be ways to squeeze the square footage down. We're not saying this is it, and it's going to be exactly this when we break ground. So we know that this is a concern. It's a concern for every client we deal with, and it's real money when you're building this square footage. So we will continue to study these things and look for those opportunities.
I think that was a good comment you, and I talked to Matt on the phone about this, and I think there's four or five other points, it may be three, three to five additional points in site plan, and you listed them all. But all the iterations of design where Vernon's going to value engineer this and value engineer, because, and Vernon, you've used that term a few times. Yeah, exactly, I know, but Vernon has used that term, and that stuck with me. The engineering team, I know, has done a lot too, but that was important for me to know that, and I think that's what I wanted to communicate so the board heard, is that there are other iterations that we're hoping to find efficiencies, and it's not about just squeezing space to squeeze space. I think Alderman, Barnhill had a good comment about needs and wants and wanting to make sure that we're not, you know, I think my fear was, and this is why tonight was very helpful, is because we're going to get, have this Taj Mahal massive building, and then we don't, we're looking at it on paper here, but seeing it laid over like you did is very helpful in showing that this isn't, because we don't look at these plans all day, every day. It's hard for us to scale and size in our heads, but that was very helpful. I do think that those iterations are going to be very important to find efficiencies wherever we can and have that space, you know, see what happens, what could be done. It may not be reducing the building size, but it might be some other value added to the community and the taxpayers who are paying for this.
And square footage isn't the only way to save money, too. I mean, we're not going to clad the entire building in marble because of cost. So there's lots of systems and things we will be designing and developing that we haven't even figured out yet, but doing that with the cost efficiency and effectiveness so that there's an operational payback and still a healthy environment for you all. And the city will be a part of that decision-making throughout the process.
And I'll correct, if Historic Zoning Commission says we clad it in marble...
They will not.
Don't put those ideas out there, Patrick.
I didn't say.
Alderman Brown, then I'll get Alderman Potts.
Just a comment, because you addressed several concerns I had in there, so I thought I'd just at least close the loop on my comments, which first of all, again, just want to echo, the overlay's really helped me out a lot in terms of looking at comparative space. It's easy to talk numbers, sometimes it's great to see it visually, and so that was very helpful. I certainly have been concerned about size and just the overall expenditure of it all. Clearly, you gave the number of, if you did the 30-foot modules, each time you took, I think, 13,200 square foot or something like that, that's a chunk probably too big. So I appreciate the framework of understanding, you know, when I'm thinking of trying to get, you know, 87, 85, getting down that number, maybe to your point, there's other ways that we find some of those efficiencies, but if not, I think to take a big chunk like a 13-2 is probably, that's doing more harm than good and probably not worth it. So I appreciate both illustrations, they were helpful in addressing those concerns for me.
Thank you.
Alderman Potts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, great presentation. Thanks for streamlining it. I'll reiterate what everybody else said. I love the visual component of that, that was very, very helpful for all of us. It would even be good if we could actually have the micro-slides broken down as you were clicking through, just so that we could see that. That was one of the misses. I was hoping maybe to activate my own PowerPoint right here, but it's in a PDF format, so I couldn't follow like that. And that's not a big ask, it was just a nice visual to share with people. I think that my, I don't have to think, my thought right now is actually focused on employee square footage, and I'm looking at Slide 11. And maybe you can do this now, if not, maybe you can bring it to us in the future, is how do we move from our current ratio of one to 418, one staff member to 418 citizens? And then we're projecting 20 years from now to move to one to 506. That's the part that I'm looking at, and I recognize that there's going to be advances in technology. I recognize as well as Eric made reference a moment ago to work-from-home model, also having vehicles, city vehicles parked at private residences, things like that, but my concern is... But my concern is really, if we're looking at it twenty years, where did that data come from? You know, I, I'd like, I'd like to know that.
I'm going to let Vernon answer that because the data obviously came from us working with staff. And each department gave their future projections for growth. I will say that we're depending on this building to create efficiencies that aren't in this existing building. So there's going to be great technology, there's going to be meeting spaces, and there's not going, there's a lot of distractions in these departments. People just walk into the departments and distract an employee or just want to talk about their issue to somebody that might not be able to help them. So part of that projection is knowing that this building is going to help reduce the staff needs due to what the inefficiencies are. And I'll turn it over to Vernon.
And Vernon, as you address the question, what I'm looking at here on Slide 11 is really, if we're currently eighty-six thousand six hundred and twenty-eight residents here in Franklin, twenty years from now, we're going to be approximately a hundred and twenty-seven thousand. And when we look at our staff, currently we're at two hundred and seven. And we're saying twenty years from now, we'll only need two hundred and fifty. Yet we're going to grow by population by forty-seven percent. There's people that are going to ask that question. And we just want to be transparent and say, here's how we got to that figure.
Well, thank you. And first of all, Happy New Year to everybody. As we know, technology impacts our lives in many ways. And it's always changing. And during the pandemic, for one example, our Development Services team has become incredibly more efficient using online plan review, MS Teams, Zoom, virtual meeting platforms. And who knows what the future, future brings? Nevertheless, we want to respond to our citizens. And some of you have heard that when we talk about the services we provide to the community, we want to be able to meet the needs of the average citizen that might come into City Hall one time in their life and be able to serve them. On the same token, we work with a lot of development professionals that it's more efficient to them to jump on a virtual meeting platform from their office, be it in Franklin, be it in Nashville, be it in another part of the country. So our Development Services Advisory Commission is looking constantly at how we serve our customers and our citizens. But most importantly, our focus is making sure we're available to respond the majority of the time when a citizen walks into this building. But technology is really the short answer. And we're going to, we have been already, and we're going to continue during this process to look at other communities that are taking advantage of various types of technology across all our services. And believe me, many of us get solicited pretty much on a daily, weekly basis from companies looking to sell us or introduce us to their products, which we are constantly open to. And that's something that you all have supported us in our enterprise solutions and even in smaller solutions to make this efficient. I hope that answers your question.
And these numbers you see are a reflection of both a global look at it, but also department by department, looking and projecting out not just a raw number, but what type of position, where, what functions do they think need to be enhanced as the community grows? Here are some things we can serve at the current level as we grow. Others will grow more proportionally with population. It's not a one-size-fits-all. And so we've kind of done that department by department, but also kind of questioned it as it rolls up and feel that this is a pretty accurate number, but, but is a realistic component in terms of how technology helps us do things better, too.
The other part I don't want to leave out because both Matt and Anna Ruth and our team, our entire city team has looked at it, is the adjacencies. Here, walking across a ten, twelve-foot hall to see if somebody's in their workstation to ask a question to get them, get an answer is incredibly inefficient today. But working when we're in the same space, some of us in open workstations, some in enclosed workstations that you can see into, is expected to enhance our efficiency and productivity as well. And that's what we see in all the tours and visits we have been making to Class A office spaces and other workplaces, both governmental and private business.
You're really vocal in that, Alderman. Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
That's a good, that's a compliment.
That's what I ran for three years ago, be vocal. Do the departments also with the projected current employment with the double they're sitting on it is. That square footage, current, to the new, to that, to the, to how you, how the two feet, I'm not interested in how you got to the two feet, one, that's you added some numbers together. I want to see the numbers there on that, okay? And did you, did you ever go over the footing, I mean, the seating for the new meeting room? Did I miss that, did I?
The boardroom?
Yeah.
Yeah, we did.
Cover that. I want them to do it, that's what they get paid for.
Well, earn our money. So this is the slide that Matt went over, showing the high occupancy night, like on a planning commission night. And based on this photo and other nights that staff have just witnessed, it's about fifty seats short on a consistent basis on high, high-end nights.
Yeah, two or three, three, four nights a year.
Right. But remember, we, we have a hundred and fifty-two seats that can accommodate this and not very much more space. Remember the graphical comparison? We haven't made a boardroom that's vastly different. And we'll give you the square footage on that, but if you want me to go back to the...
And will the entrance to this, it'll be off of this hallway out here? Where's the entrance to? If, if...
Coming off the square, yeah.
Coming off the square.
Coming off the square. So when somebody, so when somebody comes to the meeting, they've got to park either in the Third Avenue garage, which possibly may accommodate, or the Second Avenue garage. What's the most efficient way to get into this meeting room then?
From the square.
From the square? Okay.
And you can see that in plan here. I mean, we're going to have probably more sets of doors. Again, these are interior test fits, but come straight off the square directly. You can see directly into the boardroom when you come in. And then for the...
Is there still an alleyway between the...
Yeah, the promenade, and we, we've widened that because it's really narrow and uninviting right now. So right now, it's about sixteen feet and we're widening it to about thirty-two feet.
So that's an access from the Second Avenue garage?
That would be the access.
And it's more open and safe and well-lit from the parking garage as well.
And we're going to handle the ADA accessibility with a ramp adjacent to that courtyard on the two thirty-one building. But there's the size here. So we have, I mean, I feel with having a hundred and fifty-six seats instead of ninety-six and that much more square footage is a, is a good use of, a good use of space and could accommodate those nights. And we've talked about being able to have an expandable wall and even be able to go out into the lobby if you wanted to have even larger gatherings to add more flexibility, but aren't there yet.
But thinking in terms of twenty years of growth as well, we may have more than three nights of larger capacity meetings as, as we go. So we are trying to plan for that flexibility so that you can use it how you need to.
So we need to, we need to plan for excessive meeting nights, long and vastly attended, right?
Maybe.
Maybe.
You have another, you have some more?
On the back of that, just remember, it is City Hall. It's a public building, and we need to utilize it better. We don't have that luxury right now because of the way the facility is. But if we build something, we can really utilize it for our community. And the community should be using City Hall. So anyway, just a comment.
Anybody else? Want to go to the speakers? I have two speakers and...
Yeah, that'll probably bring some questions, Alderman.
I think that'll bring some questions. First is Jay Edward Campbell. And where you feel most comfortable, Jay Edward?
Thank you, I'm Jay Edward Campbell, it's his own, I think it is. I've been a resident of the city of Franklin since nineteen seventy-six, forty-seven years, more than I've lived anywhere. Grew up in Memphis. I grew up dirt poor in Memphis. There were a family of five, and we lived in nine hundred square feet, and we had one bath. And I was the first of two children of four to graduate from high school and the only child to graduate from college. Started to college in nineteen seventy. I finished that degree in two thousand and seven when I could afford it. Y'all have alluded to it tonight, their needs and their wants. One of the greatest things that ever happened to me as a child was the Sears Wish Book. The Sears Wish Book would come, and you could look at that, and you could wish, and you could want. And you know what? Most of the time, the answer with my parents was, no, we can't afford that. Or we'll save for that, and save for a rainy day and live within your means. There are a lot of needs in the city of Franklin, and this is a lot of money. It's astounding to me, I'm a realtor in town, and I'll be honest with you, million-dollar houses and million-dollar sales blow my mind. All of you are blessed, you're blessed to be stewards of the precious assets of the city of Franklin. So as we look at this, is it a want or is it a need? We're looking for the future. You know, I ran for office in twenty seventeen. And I'm asked almost on a daily basis questions because they, once you run for office in this town, they think you were elected, whether you were or not. What's going to happen to our taxes? Today, I sit here and I think, you know what? I don't have any children, I don't have any grandchildren. But you know, we're building for the next generation, and we're building a big price tag here that somebody's going to have to pay for. My plan's in life, I plan to continue to live here, I plan to retire here someday. I'm seventy years old, I'm not retired yet, and I plan to die here. I don't plan to retire and move to another state. And that's happening a lot with some of our population. And some of that population's going to leave us with a price tag to pay for. So I would ask you guys, you consider all of this, there's a lot more at stake here than a beautiful building. I do know about the property over on Columbia Avenue. I do know that this building could continue in operation while we build that property or while the city builds that property on Columbia Avenue. I think that's a solution. I did the Citizens Police Academy several years ago, and the whole bottom floor of the police department at that time was vacant. What about city offices down there? What about some other buildings that the city owns? I just don't think, and we alluded to this earlier, I work from home. I've worked from home since two thousand and three, basically. A lot of your employees at the city are going to work from home, too. So when we look at all these spaces and everything that's here, it's nice to want, it's nice to wish, but what do we really need? Thank you.
Jimmy Granberry. I will let you come up here to the table, Jimmy. It's got those ventilated things on it, so it won't be too hot.
All right. Jack Button, thank you, Mayor. I'm Jimmy Granberry, CEO and Chairman of HG Hill Realty. And I think y'all all received my letter early December about a potential swap. I know the mayor and I have casually talked about that before. And the gentleman just spoke, mentioned the fact that you could remain in business while you built that. And I heard this presentation by these fine people here. And, you know, I've been in business trying to, you know, make the shoe fit for forty-something years with HG Hill, we're a hundred and twenty-eight-year-old company. We owned our property here for a long, long time. And I just see no negatives to a swap. I know it'd have to go through the process and procurement process and government. I know how all that works. But a swap has just so many, so many positives. One really key positive, as you, as you think about it, is the police station being right next door, the synergies with the police department, sharing of services, sharing of parking, sharing of park space. I know they talked about the employees feel that they're not safe sometimes where you got the police department right next door. When you have a, when you have a late-night meeting, they're right there. It makes, just makes a lot of sense. You know, I know Mayor Moore, I know Vernon has always said to us that our property's the front door of the city. Well, you know, you could occupy that front door, right? If you built something there with the police department right there. One of the problems is we were working through our development and looking at options is that if you, if you work south on Columbia Avenue and you look at the overlay and the restrictions that are put on the properties working out, most of the properties till you get to the police station are very shallow. You know, less than a hundred feet. Then you get to the police station in our property, and then you're into the two- and three-hundred-foot in depth, which has a lot of opportunities, but also presents a lot of problems. When the police department, and I begged the administration back then, please don't build it there because it, it sort of dissects us away from the synergies of being on five points, the activity zone of, of all the, you know, pedestrian traffic that everybody works for, live, work, and play. So, you know, we're kind of on an island out there. You know, everybody we talk to, you're kind of isolated because if you sit and watch, and I learned this from Mr. Hill years ago, we sit and watch and see what people do, there is no activity at the police department. I mean, I sit for hours and watch nobody come out of the front door. Everything's happening in the back because the policemen come and go on the backside of the property because that's where the garage is. So there's really no activity. There's a surface parking lot, a really nice surface parking lot on the corner that's effectively vacant every day. I mean, I've never seen anybody park there. So, you know, that's, you know, an issue as far as, you know, the synergies of, if you have a big public meeting, you know, the, the people that y'all mentioned that need to come to City Hall could park there and walk in or go to the police department, hopefully just to, to pay a parking fine, not go to jail, right? So our sites, more than, this site here, and I'm talking very round terms because it's not listed, it's four-point-three-one acres. But if you take out the little building behind the garage and the garage, this building here is about two and a half, I think, you know, exact numbers, it's about two-point-seven-five roughly. So our lot is five-point-seven-seven. So you allow the architects to go out there and do their thing. You wouldn't have underground parking, you could do a structured parking garage like the police station. You could wrap the building, you could add much more retail than you can add here. You talked forty-six hundred feet, you could add a lot more retail to that building. You might not have to go three stories, you could probably do two stories because it's a bigger footprint to allow for that. And, you know, obviously, underground parking versus above-ground parking, there's a huge difference in the cost, a huge difference. You talked about the bays and the structural, I loved your, I'm going to steal your term, architectural gymnastics. You know, that's a problem when you, when you start working up with your column bays because you talked about transfer beams and stuff. Those are huge additive costs to a deal instead of working with an entire footprint of being able to do what you need to do. And I think, you know, y'all could obviously do a lot. And I just, you know, I listened to your presentation, I just don't see any, anything but a win-win-win for the city and the taxpayers that you could program that space, you could stay in here. You know, obviously, you work out the, the financial aspects of the deal would have to be worked out through appraisals. But I, I'm excited about it and we're busy, we got a ton of very big projects. We're working on a huge project with St. Thomas Hospital, it's about a million square feet in between our two campuses on the west side of town. We're doing a big transit-oriented development with the, in the Donaldson area that is with the Regional Transit Authority. I know, I think Ken, you're on that, you voted for us. And, you know, we're very excited about that project. We're hopefully going to bring fifty forward into the deal and add some senior living and build them a new space and so... But this project, you know, is a, obviously a much smaller in scale, two-point-seven-five acres versus what we're working with on our other projects. But it's, it's exciting because I think you could, you see the success of the hotel across the street. You just look at the vibrancy of this square and, you know, I do, you know, I hear what you said about City Hall being on the square, but this is not that far removed. And if you, you're right next door to the police station, it's kind of the front door of the city. And obviously, it's a much better deal for the taxpayer. So I'm happy to answer any questions and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
I've got Alderman Blatton, and then I'll go to Alderman Berger.
Thank you for coming. We did get your letter, and I will say I am intrigued. However, I would love to hear from you what your vision is for our property and why you don't find that same vision on your property.
Well, I think, obviously...
Let me just stop there. That's too much because we don't need to be delving into...
I apologize.
What the plans are and helping him design his plan. That, that may create a problem as far as whenever we start in procurement and going through a process. through a process. I've got Alderman Berger. Do you have another question, Alderman?
Go ahead.
Sorry.
All right. Well, I've always said that I think City Hall needs to be in the core of the city. Absolutely, unequivocally, it needs to be in the core of the city. Do I prefer it to be on the square? Absolutely. But your site over there is in the core of our city. It is downtown. It would be irresponsible of this board and foolish of our board not to have a very, very, very in-depth discussion of this. Because there's, you take a piece of paper and put the pros and the cons, we'd have to figure that out. And there are many pros and there are probably some cons for sure. The money to relocate is going to be pretty high, pretty stiff, in the millions to relocate, pay rent and be off-site and be scattered all over the city probably because it's difficult. I mean, I don't know how far, but you know, somewhat. And also the expense of moving us into those sites and technology and all that. And then the next thing is move, the expense to move us back again to the new building. The control of, and I won't go into that kind of question, but the control is if, and this is for future discussion, if that would ever happen and we would swap, and granted, you may have more square footage over there and we have less here, but I would believe this would be more lucrative in a dollar and cents way because we are on the square, because of where the location is, even though that location is, is very, very good, I think there may be something to be said about what, what happens there. But so I think my biggest concern is if we would further have this discussion, which I think we, it's absolutely necessary, that my biggest concern is that we do not create a place for big box stores down here. We cannot afford to turn our downtown into something that we are not. Franklin deserves to remain Franklin and to be this historic city that we have all worked so hard to preserve. And so I would never consider a trade, a sell or anything without having it ironclad that there are certain things that don't happen on this site. And, and I've heard many of the residents downtown saying, we want more residents. Well, back here on Turk Street, we have residential, we have residential in this area, this would be a perfect place to have for-sale condos or for-sale residential. And as we come up towards the square, bring, bring in whatever, whatever that discussion entails. Then the other thing is underground parking is certainly much more expensive and we could do parking garages, which are very expensive as well, but at least we have that option. Then one of the things, I think you said something about, you know, we're sort of an isolated site. HG Hill's site was sort of isolated because you're driving there and you have to look way back to even find that, that, those retail places. And, and they are hidden. Even before the police department went over there, it was so far back. So bringing those things up and then having the police department there is a larger building and the City Hall sort of is like the bookend of that area. And that, that area is not isolated. We have a lot of our, of course, we have the library right down the street, plus we have the historic sites that people go and visit to all the time. And also in that site, and I would just make this argument, that it gives us the luxury of still being in the downtown core, near the police station, near the courts, and walkable to any of the restaurants downtown, walkable to any place in the, in the area, in the core of the area. So I have to think about all those things, but this board really cannot do, our citizens and the people that we represent justice, if we do not look at this wholeheartedly and seriously, because it still keeps us in the downtown core, which we have to stay, in my, my opinion. And as research has showed, the people that, City Halls that move outside the downtown core get in trouble, the downtown core gets in trouble and they have ramifications. And we've talked about that before. So I think these are just my comments. I know they're rather random, but you know, my mind likes to jump all over the place because there's so many, so many aspects here to consider, but I think we, as a board, have to have some serious discussions. Thank you very much.
Alderman Barnhill, Vice Mayor Barnhill.
You know, I, I'll smile and say this, a lot of the times Alderman Berger and I do not, do not agree. I know you find that difficult to imagine. We don't necessarily see eye to eye, but it's, that's exactly what has to happen here. We've got to look at this. I mean, let me throw the numbers out to you. Eight million for the underground garage that you don't need, two and a half million to relocate, which you don't need because you'll stay here till you get that one built. That's 10 and a half million dollars somewhere off the top, bottom, or in the middle or whatever. And I think we owe that to, and this, and I want to thank you. This is basically, I think, sort of along the lines of what I've been saying for quite some time now. And, and it's a, it's, it's a, it's a delight to see this come forward and have an opportunity to look at other options because this, this property here is the most expensive piece of property, and I've said that, probably within a mile range of the monument out there. And in doing that, we're going to put a building on that, in my opinion, does not need, well, it, it's not going to be needed like it was 20 years ago or 30 years ago or 40 years ago. Because I think that technology and I think people paying online and I think the people that are doing their permits, first off, we, we shut it down for a couple of years, couldn't come down and pay anyway. When we had COVID, you had to have a mask, you had to have a test, you couldn't get into this door, that door, whatever. So what, what did they do in those two years? You know, I don't know. Well, they did what they had to do. They got on this little thing right here and did what they needed to do. But thank you for what you've said and the opportunity. I think that, I think we would be doing, the taxpayers, all of the taxpayers now, not just the core, not just a few, but all of them in, at a disservice if we didn't look at this opportunity.
Alderman Hansen, you've been quiet tonight.
Thank you. You know, I always like to wait. And I do think your presentation was wonderful on the architecture. Thank you so much. It was a great visual. So many questions that I had were answered tonight by other people's questions. I think Alderman Vice Mayor Barnhill has really hit it on the head so many of my comments. And thank you for bringing us an alternative, Mr. Granberry. And in that context, I'm sure, we saw an email this afternoon, I did a survey on my, my social media, Eric Stuckey, our city manager was aware of it as well, and we tallied the results this morning. So anybody could respond in the public, as long as they lived in Franklin. So 203 respondents answered the survey. The question was, for a City Hall, would you like to see it downtown where it currently is or would you like to see it somewhere else or we had a third choice of just other? So of the 203, 168 people voted to have the City Hall downtown next to the Franklin Police Department. 23 voted for option one, for the City Hall to remain downtown on the city square rebuilt where it currently is. The other options that were responded to were, I know some of them are shocking, but just, I have to share what everybody said and I have copies for anybody that wants this. Two people said by Ag Park in Cool Springs, close to 65, rent space in a large building in Cool Springs. One said, all caps, not on the square, want more shopping and dining options where it is least expensive. Another was fix what we have, we don't need a new one. And a spot where you can bring more parking to downtown, which I think if we can do above-grade parking, we have more options to bring more parking for events and relieve some of the congestion downtown. Another was a Long Mac Hatcher in the Verizon Call Center building. And then the other is on the edge of downtown. So those were some of the responses that were received on this. But I too, as Alderman Berger said, Vice Mayor Barnhill, feel that we owe it to our citizens to do a deep dive on all options so that they know what we've chosen is the most financially feasible for them so that we don't have to look at a tax increase down the line. And I'm sure that this same building can be somewhat adapted to a different flat surface such as that. So those, those are all my comments. Thank you.
Alderman Baggett.
Well, I think it's important because Jay Edward had this comment too, to your comment, Alderman Hansen, that what we're looking at right now just will not, there is no property tax or tax increase associated with, with the plan in hand. So it is fully funded in our capital investment plan without a tax increase. So that is important to note.
With preserving additional capacity for the projects as well.
So I think that is important. And I want there to be this narrative that it's either build this City Hall on the square and have a tax increase or don't and don't have a tax. That's not true. That's not the narrative. So just want to make that clear. I'm intrigued by this. It always has been. I think that was, I think that was the gist behind a lot of our, because we know this is valuable. We, I mean, I just looked at a couple of appraisals for buildings I insure on the square, Mr. Granberry, it's going to be expensive. And I think that's the thing I really want to dig into. You said it, we're going to have to do appraisals. And because the dirt here is not, it's great dirt on Columbia Avenue, battlefield, and I appreciate your company who's engaged with our battlefield group, that's been very, you're a community partner. And like you said, you've been here for, in this town for a long time and, and that property and served the community through that, that facility. So thank you. But I do think we have to look at, considering the, the cost of, of just what are, like, what do the taxpayers own here? And what is it worth? I can tell you what the appraised value of the property is for Onyx and Alabaster for 0.01 acres. For the dirt, just the dirt. It's not cheap and it's very different than Columbia Avenue. So I just want to set expectations that it, very well, I don't know, it might be an even swap because it's five acres, it's 2.5 acres, right? But I think for us to sit here and think that, oh, we're getting double for, it's a good trade. Like I think we, you really have to look at the details. And I'm open to looking at the details because I think that's important. The, the parking garage is $9 million under this building. You might save $5 million by building a structure. I don't know, someone can tell us. It's not going to be the full nine. We have $2 million budgeted for our relocation in the budget of City Hall, so $2 million for all the relocation and moving and this and that, we've budgeted, is that, I think that's $2 million in the budget for the City Hall. You know, that's everything, that's the, all the temporary relocation. It is cheap. And I think that, 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 I have more questions than answers, but I, I do think that, the last thing I'll say is, and I'm, I'm interested to hear more because it really all comes down to the value of the land here and the value of the land there and what that looks like. Because if it's a different, and you may say, Mr. Granberry, that it's an even swapper, we're done, or I'm not doing it because I can do, I can develop down there. And, and it very well could be. I think we got to figure that out and I think that I'm open to doing that. I also think that we have to think about the culture and the vibrancy of our downtown and what is it, yes, you can move it somewhere else, but the, there is an intangible factor to having city staff, having developers, having citizens, having our county courts being across the street and county facilities. You know, there's some in the room today that could speak to how many years ago when the county just thought they would move their facilities out of downtown and thank the Lord they didn't because we have buckets. It would not have been there without that there. Now, we're in a different environment now, right? We're a different environment now, we have a vibrant downtown. I, I just, I just, there's some softs other than the numbers that we really need to consider about when you move that amount of flow of people into this core of downtown, how does that affect the way we feel? Mr. Granberry, you have fantastic developments in Brentwood and, and Green Hills. My wife loves to dra, you know, carry me to them and we, they are beautiful. And frankly, you're creating Main Streets in many of those places. And I like to say that, yeah, we're like the HG Hill development, but we're actually real. I mean, or we're historic. You're real too, don't get me wrong, but we're historic, we're the original, the historic. And I think we have to really, to Alderman Berger's point, is thinking about what would go here is, is important. You mentioned residential. Well, I know my friends on Third Avenue certainly, certainly would, would prefer residential than a, a large commercial development and that's going to weigh heavily on me. There's a lot to this, but it comes down to the value of this land and the value of that and what the difference is. I, I hate to stall where we're at though, but I think it's warranted to look at that valuation. Thank you.
I've got Alderman Brown.
I'll echo some comments maybe differ in some others. I, I still believe in.
Double down?
Double down. I still believe in, in City Hall's impact on the square. I, I do think there's a lot of intangibles to the value of our downtown and maintaining the vitality down here. I think there, there's just something about being right on the square. I think there are plenty of examples out there, we've talked about some of them, of where you pull that out, there is an, implications to that. Some of that is hard to quantify and, and, but I believe in it and I believe, I believe we've got a great spot here. Having said that, well, let me say a couple of things. I also just have this really great hope that someday that property gets developed into something that'd be fantastic for those surrounding neighborhoods over there and that whole area. Like I, I've just longed for something to be developed on that property that could really serve that, that area of our, of our city and I still hope for that. I think in addition to, in addition to, you know, really understanding what the, what the real pickup of value would be, because I, I agree with you, it's not a, it's not a dollar for dollar. I think there's other questions, like if you, you know, it's five acres, so what's the additional cost to develop the rest of the property outside of the space that we need and the parking that we need? That may actually add cost back into the model to develop five acres, not two and a half. So, so I think, I'm all for the due diligence, I think you're right. I think it'd be, it would be wrong for us not to do the due diligence to understand the financials. But the financials aren't just simply not doing an underground garage and, and not relocating. I think, because I think there's costs coming the other way too on developing a larger site, what the value of this property is. I, I too fear we're going to slow this thing down even further and we're going to be, you know, even further down the road. But boy, I don't know how you don't, I don't know how you look a taxpayer in the eye and say you didn't at least do the due diligence to, to do the math on it. But I, but again, I think there's also some soft skills. I would love, you know, for Heidi and the team downtown, I'd love to, I'd love to know their, their thoughts on the implication of a difference between City Hall being on the square and City Hall being, you know, around the corner. I mean, you even said yourself, it's been a difficult property for you now at the police station because it feels disconnected from the core of the whole. I, I don't think just because we're a City Hall and, and tangential business to the police station, it's still going to be a separation from the core of the downtown. I still, I think your comment's correct and I worry that that would still be the case for City Hall. And just because we're a public facility doesn't mean we shouldn't be a part of that energy and that ecosystem, not only contributing to it, but actually pulling from it. So I'm intrigued. I, I will say, I love that you, that you, that you're, that you're such a community steward, that you threw it out there. Nobody else has, so thank you for that. You know, short of the due diligence to be done, I, I'd still want to be here and I still want to see something fantastic over there that's not a City Hall, to be honest with you. I, I would actually maybe argue that we might do more economically for our city, for somebody to build, for you to build a fantastic development on that property than to take over this one. But, but again, there's probably some math to be done there. So that's my two cents.
Well, I'm going to throw my two cents in if it's okay. And I'm going to have to apologize to Mr. Granberry because as his parting comment one day was, we just ought to swap property. And I didn't take, take him very seriously on it until I understood that the, Alderman got a letter from him wanting to swap the property and mine's still in the mail, I assume, so. But this is a little bit of a deja vu to me because I've gone through this in 2007 with the police. with the police building, where we heard from our mayor then that he did not want to build a police station there, wanted to move it elsewhere. And we went through this for about three months, and eventually came back and, of course, built it there. I'm not opposed to, well, let me just say, it's ingrained in my mind so much that City Hall should be on the square, it's going to be difficult for me to change my mind, because that's been my mindset since 2007. Whenever we saw a proposal that came to the city, and then we had the recession, that proposal went away along with the financing. I'm not opposed to looking at it. I think that's the appropriate thing for us to do, is to let staff look at that. I would hope that we would do that in a parallel fashion simultaneously, because quite honestly, I would be concerned that if we stop our current process, it will be very, very difficult to restart that process. These guys have been working for a couple of years, and to turn it off and then try to turn it back on is probably going to put us many years behind as far as ever being able to gear back up again. And, you know, the comments been made that, you know, costs are going up, and I admire what staff's done. They've built in everything into this model that I think we can think of. And it's with your penetrating questions as far as, did you include this? Yeah, we included that. I mean, I'm amazed with how well they've thought through this thing. So, you know, I'm still an advocate of downtown Franklin, that, you know, I like it on the square. I like having the tree on the square. I like being out there and everybody up there, and we plug in the tree at night. I have people now want the lights up year round. It's been great. So as far as walkable, I'm not really sure, you know, based on what planning tells me, people are going to walk a block and a half. I don't think that property is very walkable back to the core of our city, and I would be concerned about that. So I appreciate Mr. Granberry being a good steward of all his properties and building great things, and I appreciate him coming tonight along with Celeste, who's back there. So good seeing her. So I think Mr. Silva wanted to say something, so I'm going to let Mr. Silva take Mr. Granberry's spot. And this is unusual that, yeah, I'll give you another.
Oh, you want me to come back?
No, no, you can make a comment.
Just real quick. Sorry. When I talk about acreage, I just want to be clear, I'm just saying that, I'm just giving square footage versus square footage. I'm not at all talking about value, and the value's in how the property's owned and what restrictions are on the property. So that's all part of the equation. And as far as you mentioned about what happens out there on, you know, programming 5.7 acres, well, it's a wonderful opportunity for a public-private partnership. If y'all don't want to do retail, you, you know, you land lease part of your property to be part of your deal and let the public-private partnership prevail, and they do what they do best, and they develop retail to, you know. And then from a flow of people, I know, I really, you know, look, we've tried extremely hard to create pedestrian-friendly, activated, streetscape, cityscapes, whatever, city, you know, whatever you want to call it. You know, City Hall kind of dies at 5:00 on Friday, right? And if you had retail, you had a hotel, you had residential, they would be here seven days a week, you know, all during the day. And then, you know, I just can't, you know, the flow of people, you know, you talk about a block and a half, and if you had all these people that y'all referenced that come to City Hall on a daily basis, all those people would now activate that into the Columbia Avenue park. So just, and if you had retail to complement your city offices and your city planning and the mayor's office and the courts and, you know, the meetings and stuff, all those things work hand in hand. And I, and I just can't express enough the front door of the city in combination with the existing police department, which is a beautiful building on the front, but it's very utilitarian, because it's got the garage in the back, and, you know, it's just not much activation. So to have the synergies between the two, sharing of parking, sharing of services for the taxpayers, you know, we've gotten into what's called shared parking, where you look at, you know, residential, hotel, retail, you know, office. And, you know, your office people go home at 5:00, so, you know, then there's more parking for your retailers at night that come in at night. So there's just a lot of synergies, a lot of combinations. And I appreciate the opportunity, Mayor, and I'll look for your letter. I'm sorry you didn't get it. I'm, quite honestly, I blame that on Celeste, why I didn't.
I'll follow him a copy of that.
Yeah, I don't know why it got lost. But thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I'm-
Yeah, thank you.
I'm unable to continue the conversation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Happy New Year, everyone. I've been sitting here and having-
Well, if you go ahead and say who you are. Most people know you.
Can you hear me?
We hear you, okay, but we need to know who you are.
Oh, okay, I'm Ed Silva.
All that routine stuff.
I'm a local attorney, been practicing here for 48 years. I'm a proud owner of the McCune-German Building on Fifth Avenue and 96, which is a historic resource here, built in 1870, and I'm sure you all are familiar with the history of that building. I've been past president of the Heritage Foundation, president of the Cotton Association, chairman of Streetscape, which was a seminal move to bring back and breathe life back into Main Street. And sitting here and listening to this, I'm having a deja vu experience about when the courthouse wanted to move down to be next to the jail, because it was a matter of efficiencies. Wouldn't that be great? We can just march those prisoners right across from the jail into the courthouse in one size fits all. But at the time, some of my colleagues are here today, we realized that if we took that courthouse out of downtown Franklin and put it out where the jail is, the courthouse, for a lot of reasons, good, bad, indifferent, there's a lot of traffic that goes in and out of that courthouse, and those people collaterally then go have lunch, and then they walk down and shop in our historic shopping district. Part of the, the whole history of this community is the fact that we're centered in the square. Our logo talks about our history, going back hundreds of years. And this is the heart of our community. It beats here, in this building. It's the people's building. This is where we're being governed. This is where the people know they can come down and they can be heard, either at this kind of, or they can go to services, because it's downtown, which has always been the heart of our community. And what I'm listening to is, we want to do a heart transplant. We want to take this living, breathing, wonderful organism and take it and put it on Columbia Highway, Columbia Avenue, excuse, and claim that that's part of Main Street. Well, I've been here 48 years, that's not part of Main Street, okay? Main Street ends, and that's Columbia Highway, and it goes to Columbia, okay? And that's not an extension of where we are. I think the police station being there makes a lot of sense to me, quite frankly. It's a beautiful edifice, and its function isn't the same as where the people's business is being done. And that should be here, right here, where it's been, well, for the, all the time that I've been around, okay? We used to come to court here in this, in this building. At one time, I had a title company in this building. And it has been a center of commerce, it's been a center of the community. Let's keep it alive and breathing. Let's, let's make this incredible building. I mean, it's a balance sheet. I've listened to the economics here, and I'm not going to challenge a head of a wonderful business enterprise, H.G. Hill, they're tremendously successful. But I listened to this, it's a balance sheet, okay? His balance sheet has that property at this value, well, and he wants to swap it. I ain't a dummy, that must mean they're equal value. No one's going to come up here and drop, because they like the city, and give them something, okay? There has to be, so if the balance sheet is the same, why are we going out on the Columbia? We're not going to lose the value. It's always going to be on the balance sheet of the city. It's an incredible asset. We are the number one city in the state of Tennessee, we're the number six destination in the country, and why is that? It isn't because of this little building here, it's because of Main Street, it's because of our history, because we've been vibrant and alive for hundreds of years. We've got, we've got history that we're not proud of, we've got history that we are proud of. But it's, it's an incredible asset. Let's not take it off the balance sheet and move it out to Columbia Highway, and if that's downtown, I'll retire, okay? It's not downtown. It used to be a center out there that failed. Well, nothing on Main Street's ever failed. Why did that center fail? Because there's no traffic out there. That's not downtown, okay? And here, that's downtown, it isn't. So let's recognize what we have. We have the most wonderful city, and our government, the people's business, is right in the downtown of this city, right off the square. How better can that be? And I thank you for letting me do a little rant here, but I'm obviously passionate about Franklin, I love this place. I may say y'all park your car, but my allegiance is here. My accent may lie elsewhere. So thank you for your time and your consideration, but please, build this wonderful place right here. Thank you.
Well, wait, I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to say something. Back in the, early 1970s, City Hall was over there at the Bethelham. What City Hall was over at the Bethelham Funeral Hall.
Yeah, that's right.
That's right.
Well, a little historical revisionism in this town is okay. You're right. I knew I couldn't get by the historian. But allow me to speak, and please, stay here.
Mr. Spooky, I think you had a few comments.
Well, if I can, I'd like to talk a little bit about where we go from here, and maybe get a little sense of how you want to proceed, and what we might set the stage for as we move to next week's work session, et cetera. But, yeah, I sense there's at least an interest to do our due diligence on options. And so what I'd like to have the opportunity to do is give you a sense of what we think that might look like, what's involved in that from staff perspective, share that, what kind of homework we think we would need to do to help do that. We've touched on some of them today, getting multiple appraisals of what we own is worth, and understanding the context of that, and how we want to analyze that, what that timing looks like, lay out for you the process. We can't just sit down across the table and work it out with Jimmy Granberry. You got to open it up to other people. You've got state law that guides what you do, and says you need to get the greatest value you can from the property you own. So there's a process we have to work through. Doesn't say you can't get there, but you got to work through it. And there might be others who have an offer for you as well. So you need to provide a pathway for them to do it. You don't do a deal with the first person that walks through the door. You do your due diligence, you look at what that means. We can look at that generically, we can look at that more specifically. And I'd like to be able to give you a little more of a sense, and we have elements of it, but I don't want to try to speak to that tonight, but maybe even give you at least an initial cut at it when we come back on Tuesday, next Tuesday, at the work session there. Mayor touched on this a little bit, and I'd like to plant the seed with you to think about how we can maybe continue to move in parallel and better understand this site while we evaluate other, another option, or a near downtown option, or whatever you want to call it. And we have done an update of the professional services agreement to provide for schematic design that reflects the building that Matt and Anna Ruth talked to you about. We have some milestones or benchmarks in that contract. One idea would be, let us continue to work on that at least till maybe the 50% schematic, that helps us answer some more questions that you all have brought up around what this site, how it functions, even what it might kind of look like, give you a sense of that. That's about four months out, something like that. We can give you a sense of what that might cost us to do that work. But while we also do this parallel work of helping look at what alternative sites might look like and what those trade-offs might be, there are pros and cons to all of them. And our job would be to try to help you identify and think through all those as best we can. And then just, kind of, last comment, this is a 100-year decision. We got to get it right, okay? And it's not just about a few dollars over the next 10 years, or five years, or even 20 years. We got to think about what that means long-term, and there are dollars and cents to it, but there's also how it fits in the community. Okay, so that's going to be part of it, too, and we'll try to help you assess that, but you as, as the leaders who actually get to vote on it, we want, that's, that's part of it, too, and I want to make sure, I know you're thinking about that, but I just, I felt like that had to be said in terms of, as we think about it, let's make sure we're thinking there, too, because what we're going to do, I believe in my heart, it's still going to be working 100 years from now if we do it right, because we'll do it in a way that we're proud of and that serves the community well. So I'll stop there, but if that makes sense, we'll work towards doing that. We had already planned to bring an updated professional services contract to you that reflects this current building plan, that we revised based on costs and feedback and other elements, and that, that we walked through tonight. And with the idea of maybe we look at a benchmark that we could keep working towards, so that we're making progress on both this site and best understanding this site, while we also come up with a framework to better understand other options as well.
Got Alderman Brown, then Alderman Baggett.
Goodness to you and the staff. It's a tall ask. I'll be honest with you, I wouldn't even know how to begin to quantify. This is not an Excel document exercise that you're being asked to do here, because there's so much qualitative that goes with this. So I agree, we had to do something, but I just don't know what. I will say, we've had both DNA and DFA here. I think to hear those voices would be really important. They represent not only the residents of the downtown area, but they represent the retail and the businesses. And so I think to include their thoughts on this would be really important. Clearly, they, they have an interest and care in the room. So I think that would be, while I appreciate the survey, I think to get that feedback and understand that implication would be an important part of that. So agree with the due diligence, I just, I think it's a tall order, because I don't know how you're going to balance what's really a cost implication and what really is represented by what Mr. Silva, and I think what's in my heart and what I feel and what the mayor's expressed, too. So, thank you.
Alderman Baggett?
I don't know how this works with, in government process, but really, I mean, there's nowhere else that I would think City Hall would, could possibly be. I mean, in downtown. I know we have to go through, and I'm not saying we circumvent that, I'm saying, so the other thing is, is that I think, frankly, I'm not going to speak for anybody, but I think the value of this property is going to be astronomically more than the value of the five acres of the street. And so we can kind of nip this in the bud as well, Mr. Granberry can make a business decision, and if we can get to that faster as well, I'm not saying that's what I want, I just have a gut feeling based on appraisals that I've seen downtown of dirt, kind of the value of what this is. So while I love the idea, I think it really comes down to a dollars and cents, I mean, just the dollars and cents maybe, no. Before we go to the, the things that I think we're all so passionate about, and you've seen so much motion from, and thank you for that, and thank you for, Mr. Silva, for the motion. But I think there's some pretty quick ways to make some decisions, and I think knowing the value of what we're, what we have here is, for me, going to be a very big part of that.
Alderman Berger?
I'll ditto that, absolutely ditto that. You know, I don't think we had to throw the baby out with the bathwater if we would switch and go to that Columbia Avenue area. I mean- I mean, certainly you did the plans for this spot, but you have a lot you do not have to throw out. You have major plans that will work in that spot, no matter what. You gotta do a lot of juggling around and changing, of course, and it kind of costs money to change that, of course, but you've got solid plans that can be translated into that. Slowing down this process, as bad as we don't want to do that, it's okay. That is okay, because guess what? We have a fiduciary responsibility here that is so much greater, and Ed, I love you, I love you, all these people in this room, I mean, Jay Edward, everybody, everybody has such great comments, and I'm passionate about it with you. I totally, I want it here, I want to stay here, but fiduciarily, in, in other ways, we have to look at this. We have to wait. Patrick, you brought up a lot of really good points there, but we might have to slow this process down. We might not want to, but we may have to. But also, you know, I don't even know anybody that doesn't consider Columbia Avenue downtown. It may not be the court, well, it may be the downtown people that don't, but everybody in the city says, "I'm going downtown to the police station. I'm going downtown to Carter, or to, to Lot's, Lode's House," or whatever. So it is, and it is expanding. Downtown is expanding, because people are moving in, they're establishing businesses and off, a block or two off the sites of, of Main Street. But, so, and walkability is definitely changing, we all know that, and we're trying to tell people to walk more, and we're encouraging that, and people are walking more. And City Hall, whoever said, City Hall after 5:00 is non-existent. It's correct. From 5:00 to Monday morning at 8:00, nothing happens here.
Excuse me, it's almost 7:00. So it is busy. Other times, other than after 8:00.
I guess we're two hours late. I said, I said Friday night, because I, I don't know, unless you're starting to call meetings Friday night, I don't think we're gonna show up. But I just have a few more quick comments. We could also do retail along with City Hall on Columbia Avenue, I would think about this. The courts are totally different. Their foot traffic is like this. City Hall's traffic is definitely different from the courts. Columbia Avenue is not Main Street, absolutely not. It is not Main Street, but, you know, we are, it is a part of our core here. And, and then a swamp certainly does not equal, is not, does not mean equal value at all, not in my book. Not a swamp, the swamp, a property. Not swamp. It could be a swamp. I haven't looked lately as a swamp.
You've been around Mr. Silva too much, starting to talk like him.
That, I'm sorry, I've got your accent going here, whatever it is. The swamp, the swamp. So it definitely doesn't have to be equal value, I don't think it, I don't think it ever would be. And we are not on the National Register, as you said, you said it so clearly, we're not in the National Register because of this building. That's right, we're not, and we won't be in the National Register, or on the national scene, rather, because of this building, or because we build City Hall here or not. We are on it because of Main Street, our history, everything, everyone, so many people in this room have done, everybody have gone before us, Ernie Bacon, Ed, the Heritage Foundation, Walter, all of you, Jay Edward, all of you, Mindy, all of you have been involved in what we've been doing all these years, and the people came before us. So I think what happens here in this center, I, I need to say this again, would I love to keep City Hall right here, you bet your bottom dollar, this is where I want it, but I'm not sure. And I really need to have that in-depth, really, really hard discussion that, you know, I know I'm gonna get calls up from some of these people beat, beat up on me or something, and that's okay. We have to do this, and it's not gonna be easy to, these are some of the times that we're saying, "Why do I do this job?" You know, I like to go home and go, "Oh, I don't have the responsibility of this vote." It's a huge responsibility, and Eric, you're right, this is a long-term thing, and we are here for the long haul. We should be, this building should be here, and 100 years, I'm looking great, no matter where it is. So, but I just really want to thank you for the fabulous presentation, and for people coming out tonight, and for the passion, because we need this. Thank you.
Oops.
Is it over?
It can be, but if you need to come in, Vice Mayor.
No, 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 and I'll, I'll do this in my best Burwood accent. I think, I think we have a fiduciary responsibility to 86,000 or 87,000 people, and we need to look at this. Whether or not we've passed along now comments that have been enough to, to, for the public to already know how you're going to vote, regardless of what it comes back, we're only being, you're only being asked to look at this project. What, what disturbs me as much as anything is, we're two or three years into this, we've had our head in the sand for two or three years, just nothing but focused on this location, not looking elsewhere. Eric said the same thing. He said, "We'll look at this, we've also got to go to other things, we've got to go to other proposals, state law." Those things should have been vetted before we're at this location now. And I noticed Mr. Silva said that there was a, the business did not, it went broke on, on Columbia Avenue, but nothing on Main Street had gone out of business. Did you say that? Hmm? Yeah. I doubt if that's correct. I used to go to Standard Farm, and I know it doesn't exist anymore. Or Webster County Bank, and I know it doesn't exist anymore. Ben Franklin doesn't exist. Corner Drug doesn't exist. Sunny Drug doesn't exist. The Thea... They all, that's correct.
And what's that building worth now?
So, so, and we, we went back in 87 and 88 and did, and did the Main Street revitalization thing, yeah. So I, I don't, I think that we've had some change on Main Street besides that, and, and there's nothing historical about this building, other than if you shop at Castor's around in here, or Sears on the other end. So I think we have, I think we have a responsibility to see what's out there, which is what some of us have been saying for quite some time, look.
Thanks for coming.